Okay, Mr. Mayor, you're in our life.
Thank you. Welcome, folks. This is our City Council Virtual Meeting, October 12, 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jimmy Clinton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
Mayor Jason Larry.
President, thank you. All right. Councilman Rob Turner, if you do us a pleasure, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Giving all glory and honor to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we thank you for your goodness, mercy, grace, and love in this opportunity to walk in our purpose and destiny to serve the citizens of Stonecrest. We ask the presence and the power of the Holy Spirit to cover us as mayor, council, and staff as we work together in your spirit and your word, to see that justice is done, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before you, our God, as you require of us. Thank you for allowing us to enhance, empower, and protect those you have given us to govern. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, pleasure, ladies. What, ladies? Ladies?
The United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic.
For which is saying. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Of liberty. And justice for all. Thank you, counsel. Um, we're gonna move a, uh, we're gonna replace the item, uh, from, uh, the, uh, work session. Uh, we're gonna take, uh, the, uh, uh, create job descriptions and advertise for finance director and internal auditor. And we're going to, uh, replace that with, on the new business with, uh, executed contracts.
Mr. Mayor, can I have clarity on that? Are you asking to remove an item that four council members asked to put on the agenda?
Um, per our charter, Councilwoman, you can only add one item. So the item that we've already covered, which is the executed contracts, we're not gonna cover that item, but we will cover the contract for external auditing firm.
Um, I'm sorry, one more question. Um, the council can only add one item, or council members of the council can only add one item?
Mr. Denmark, you want to opine on that? Which I think he already has extensively.
I'm sorry, was that directed to me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, um, as the charter indicates that, um, an item may be added to the agenda at the request of two council members. So I read that to mean one item may be added to the agenda.
The agenda that was added, you have two items on there. So, uh, the, uh, one that I've already covered anyway, so I'm removing that item and keeping the one that you all requested, which is B, contract with an external auditing firm to conduct a comprehensive audit of the government purchasing credit cards.
Yes, understood that. Um, wanted to make sure I understood Attorney Denmark in that one item per council member, or one item to the agenda from anybody?
Now, i- it, one item, period, can be added to the agenda. As I read the charter, uh, it says, uh, that the mayor sets the agenda, however, at the request of two council members, an item may be added to the agenda. And I, I, as I read that, it means precisely what it says. An item may be added to the agenda. Um, and I, if it was the intention for multiple councils, it would have said that, but it didn't say that. It just said, "An item may be added to the agenda."
Okay, and we need a motion, um, and for, uh, and a, an affirmative vote to change the agenda, is that correct?
To, to change.
To accept the agenda.
Well, the agenda's been posted and advertised, right, with, with the two items on there, right? So to make a change to the agenda, would we not need to go through the typical standard procedures as, that we do to change the agenda? Right? I don't know, Attorney Denmark, you were on, um, but the mayor has asked that he, that we replace an item so that, because we have two items on the agenda, he would like to re- to replace one item that we've added with the item that came from the work session, which, which starts to pose those questions. So now I'm asking, if the agenda has already been posted and advertised, we would now need to, is it appropriate to just, uh, remove an item because two, because there are two items being added already? Or because it's already been posted and advertised, to change the agenda, we would need a motion and an affirmative vote to change what's already been advertised and posted?
The, the requirement that we vote to change an item or to change the agenda, as I understand it, is not in the charter. Um, however, the requirement that, uh, an item may be added to the agenda is in the charter. And so the charter takes precedence over other laws, um, and enactments. Uh, so I see it as a charter issue as it relates to, um, adding an item to the, the chart, to the, to the agenda, but it's not really a charter, uh, provision with regard to, uh, amending of the agenda.
Right, so let me, let me restate my question. The agenda's been advertised, right, with said items on it. If we are not to hear the items on the agenda that have already been there and advertised, what is the process to, to not hear the items on the advertised agenda?
Well, it depends. I mean, if, if it was an ordinary agenda item that was, was published, then that would be one thing. But I think if the mayor wants to exercise the power under the charter that says that an item can be added to the agenda, um, the agenda is what we are gonna discuss tonight. I don't know whether, what is actually, uh, published would control what we actually discuss. I think that the mayor, uh, has the authority, uh, to add a single item, or he's obligated to add a single item to the agenda. Since if he got twenty, um, um, requests, he could, he would add an item to the agenda, and he would have to pick amongst the, the multiple requests that he receives. I think that the mayor can put, can set the agenda, um, and he would, the charter provision says that he has to take the advice of the council and of the general public as he sets the agenda, and then the other provision says that he, um, can add an item to the agenda at the request of two council members. So if he got multiple requests, he would have, he would be obligated to add one of them, and it's up to the mayor which one he wants to add.
Yes, Attorney Denmark, I think we understand that part. I think what I still haven't heard you answer is, the agenda has been, so he's accepted both, right? And then we posted the agenda, and the agenda has been advertised.
That, what I'm saying is that doesn't matter. The posting, the advertising, that part of it doesn't matter, because that's not in the charter. What's in the charter is that the mayor must add an item at the request of two council members. That's what he's obligated to do.
So that item that I'm adding is.
Okay, so I understand that part. Let me ask you another question. Every meeting, when we change the agenda, whether we add, remove, change orders, right? We have been instructed to put a motion on the floor to amend the agenda. So you're saying now that we don't have to do that, never did?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the mayor put forth the agenda. This item, items were requested to be added. He only has to add one. And if he added five of them, uh, to the agenda, um, he was only obligated to add one. He was only obligated to add one. And so the requirement that the, adding those items to the agenda, he did that because he was required to do that under the charter, but moving an item off the agenda or modifying the agenda i- is not a charter requirement in terms of the, 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 the vote to, to add or to remove an item from the agenda. So it's kind of where our practice butts up against the charter.
So do we need a motion to amend the agenda or not?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
I am too, because I'm just trying to get another.
Well, I'm speaking now, if you don't mind. I'm, I'm speaking.
Well, I, I do mind, sir, because I'm trying to get an understanding.
Well, I'm chairing the meeting, so allow me to explain this.
Well, I would like to hear it from the attorney on parliamentary procedure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you need a, a, do you need a motion to amend an agenda or not?
I appreciate that. Here's where we are. We're gonna have one item of those two, of my choosing, that you all sent to, I'm gonna select one. I'm gonna select the one that you sent in first, which is contract with an external auditing firm. We're not gonna cover executed contracts. We're not gonna do that. We're gonna cut, by charter, and I'm following the charter. You get to pick.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not doing this right. We're not doing this right.
Yes, sure we are.
We're not, we're not doing this right. The, we have always amended the agenda if it needed to be different. And now Attorney Denmark, you're saying we don't, we don't have to do that?
I'm gonna recognize George Turner.
Okay.
The way it appears to me is that the mayor has sent in an agenda, so this becomes the mayor's agenda with all of these items on it. And we're asked to add another item to the agenda. That does not take into account replacing an item that the mayor sent in on the mayor's agenda.
No, so that, so that, so that you all sent in, uh, Councilman Turner.
But you, you accepted it and put it on the.
So now, I'm following the charter. I'm following the charter. I'm following the charter. The charter says you all get one. That's the one that you're gonna have. I'm following the charter. That's the one that you're gonna have. The question that I have for you, do you want to add the work session item to create a job description for the advertised finance director and internal auditor? Would you all like to have that on the agenda?
We can add to the agenda that you have presented, and this is the presented, the agenda that was advertised and presented coming from the mayor.
And once again, Councilman, uh, uh, you get one. And if I want to select that one, I can select that one. I don't have to select two. Uh, the city attorney has opined on that three times.
But he was not clear that you select.
I thought it was clear as a bell.
At, at, at the time you received the agenda, you could have selected one then and said, "I'm only adding one," and it's kind of agenda with that.
Every meeting, every meeting, every meeting.
You need a motion to amend the agenda. You can't just amend it without a motion.
Here is the thing here, we actually have a motion when we accept the meeting. That's what we have on here for the agenda. Approval of the council agenda, that's when we take a vote to approve the agenda. That's when we take a vote to approve the agenda.
Right, the agenda as posted?
No, doesn't say that, agenda as posted. Doesn't.
Right, so you can make a motion to replace something, and you still need a vote to have a new agenda?
Councilwoman, you're gonna have one item on this agenda. Which one?
Somebody needs to be clear about how you change, how you.
Um, I, I thought the, I thought the, the, the city attorney was crystal.
He is not being crystal clear about how you amend the agenda. The agenda is what it is, and you're asking to change it.
Um, if you'd like to opine again.
Yes, please opine on how you change an agenda.
Yeah.
May I ask a question before he does?
Uh, no, you can't. I wanna hear from the city attorney, then you can ask your question.
All right, the agenda as presented this evening is the agenda. There's no requirement that we publish an agenda X number of days in advance. The agenda is what's in front of us tonight, and the mayor sets that agenda subject to, uh, section 3.01 of the charter. So when we say change the agenda, but we're not changing, we, we'll be changing it from, as you understand it, from the agenda that was published previously, but we're not bound by that agenda. The agenda is what we present tonight. I, I, I'm going strictly by what's in the charter. There, there's nothing in the charter that says that, since it's a charter, it said that the agenda has to be published X number of days, uh, in advance of a meeting, and the mayor has to publish that agenda, then that would be the agenda. As I understand it, uh, the mayor is presenting an agenda this evening, um, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, if the agenda was being presented this evening, then that's the agenda. Uh, and all prior, um, drafts and, and publications of the agenda, I, I don't, I don't think that that's what, where, where, what the mayor is bound by.
Right, and that's, so we're on the same page there. What the mayor is asking is that the agenda that you have in front of you, that he remove an item and replace it with another without a motion to amend the agenda. So that, so you have the agenda that you have in front of you today, and he is saying that, I, I think it's B, isn't it B under new business? To replace that item with the item that we did not get to on the, okay, A, I'm sorry. To replace A with the item that we did not get to on the work session, and that we don't need to vote on that change because the charter says he only has to accept one item from the council, and since he's already accepted two, and he didn't know prior to accepting two, that he's now replacing it with something else, and there's no need for a vote.
Uh,
But what we're asking you.
George Turner, Councilman Turner, you, you recognize Councilman Turner?
Thank you. Uh, Attorney Denmark, do you understand that this is a request to remove an item from the agenda? Not to add, just, not to just singly add an item to the agenda, but it's to remove and add. Where the council has the, uh, uh, right by charter to add an item to the agenda at the meeting. We're not just asking for that. We're asking if you just leave it as is and do nothing to it, and not add anything to it, will we be okay with the agenda?
Maybe I'm not understanding your question. I did not understand that it was, I, I, as I understood the issue, the issue was council proposed more than one item to be added to the agenda, not tonight. Okay.
Then.
Can, can I just ask a simple question? It's very basic and simple. If there are any changes to the agenda, does it have to be voted on?
Yes, that's when we accept, we do it every meeting, when we accept the, uh, 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 the approval of the council agenda. Number five, we do it every meeting.
So by removing one of the items on the agenda, we have to vote on that to approve that? Am I trying to understand that? Or we vote?
You approve the agenda. You approve the agenda, you approve the whole agenda.
He's not letting you get your question out.
I, I, I apologize, uh, Councilman Turner. I'll, I'll listen.
I'm just confused. I, I, I'm really kind of confused, and I'm not trying to be funny. I just, is there any, if we're amending something, don't we have to vote for the amendment of it, or amending or any changes to something that has been posted?
When you, when you vote to approve the council agenda, that's what handles it. You approve the council agenda. You don't, you don't individually go down by the piece. You approve the council agenda. We do this every meeting. What's the difference between now is that, whether you all feel this way or not, I was pulling the courtesy of adding that agenda item, and I said replace, but adding that, the agenda item that we missed in, um, uh,
One section.
Right? But I wasn't going to allow two council items on this agenda anyway, per the charter. I would be going against the charter. I could have, I could award one item, and that one item was B. We were not going to cover A.
Which is understood had that happened before the agenda was created. So we have an agenda, so Attorney Denmark, I'm, I'm gonna try to get this out. We have an agenda today that has A and B under new business. The mayor would like to remove A altogether because he's saying that the charter only required him to add one of those items. So he wants to remove A. Our question was, does that need a vote? Because the agenda is already set, and I'm sure your answer is yes. Because that's what we have always been doing.
Right, yeah, and that's, that's why I was going, we, we have always done that. That certainly has been our practice. But what I'm going to is the letter of the charter, not our practice. We can continue to follow up. If your question to me is, what does the charter say? I'll open the charter and read it for you.
Well, that's not what our question is.
Well, my, my opinion is that the mayor sets the agenda. And if we have been voting on the agenda to approve the agenda for years past, well, we, that's just what our practice, but the charter doesn't say that. I, I, I'm going strictly by the words that are in the charter, not my interpretation of those words, not my opinion about those words, but what the charter says. The charter says the mayor sets the, the agenda for city council meetings, period. If that's what it says, and then it says, he has to, council members can add an item if, if two of them would make that request. That's all it says about us voting to approve the agenda. That's nowhere in the charter. That's nowhere in the charter. That's the only point I'm making. It's not in the charter, but it's our practice, or it's in Robert's rules, or it's in an ordinance. Those practices in, in charter, in, in ordinance provisions have to yield to the overarching authority of the charter. All, the only thing the charter says is, the mayor sets the agenda, and two council members can have one item added. That's all the charter says. I'm not prepared to suggest that our practice trumps the charter. If the charter had said something about, um, um, you know, publishing agendas and, and all this other stuff, then, then I would say then those provisions have to be respected. But you don't, the, the, it's like playing space. The charter is the big joker. The charter governs, and the only thing the charter says is, the mayor sets the agenda, and council members can add an item. That's it.
Yes, I think we understand that. What we're trying to get clarity from.
I'm recognizing Tammy Grimes, please. I'm gonna recognize Councilwoman Grimes.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman Cobble, I didn't realize.
No.
No, you're all right. Go ahead.
Um, uh, Mr. Denmark, here's my, here's my, my question, and it may be a little bit different than, uh, Councilman Turner and Councilwoman Cobble. Understanding that the charter says that council can only add an item, and that the mayor set the agenda. If the number of items that council wanted to add to the agenda, if they were not going to be approved by the mayor, why would they have been placed on the agenda and published? My, that's, that's, no, 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 no. That was a state, that was a question kind of statement. But here's, here's my question, Attorney Denmark. If the mayor decides, like he's doing now, that we're going to take something from work session and put it on top of items that the council asked to be on the council agenda, who gets to choose which one leaves and which one stays? Because I'm not sure if the council would rather have A stay, or B stay, or A go, or B go. So, so that's my, that's my question. Can the mayor, can the mayor make the choice on his own, and I know he has much authority, I get that, but can he make that decision to take off what he has agreed to put on that came from the council? That's my question.
Yes, ma'am. The, the, the charter says that the mayor sets the agenda for council meetings. And that's, uh, uh, that's straight from the charter. Uh, that's not my spin. That's not my interpretation. That's just what it says. Now.
Do we set the agenda in the meeting, or do we set the agenda before the meeting?
It, it doesn't put a time limitation on it. It doesn't say, so it just says the mayor sets the agenda for the, for the council meetings. And, and there are two limitations. It says the first, that the mayor is obligated to receive input from members of the city council and the city manager and the public in setting the agenda, and that's what I would conclude this process as being, our practice in the past of approving the agenda. That's the mayor receiving the input that the charter requires. The other thing the charter requires is that it obligates the mayor to accept an item, whether he wants to or not, if, if two council members are requested. And that's all the charter says, and so.
And I get, my, my confusion, Attorney Denmark, just comes with the fact that Mayor Larry accepted what we sent and now wants to pull something off. That's, that's just my, that's just my question. So maybe we'll get it tonight, maybe we won't.
Yeah, I mean, the, the mayor can speak to that. The, the only opinion I'm giving is on what the charter says, and I, I'm asked to reconcile the, the charter with our traditional practice. And, and I'm saying that if our practices aren't rooted in the charter, or something that's higher than the charter, like state law, if it's, if it's, if you ask me that, then I say our practices have to yield because the charter is preeminent. And the charter says what the charter says, and it says that the mayor sets the agenda for the city council meeting. That's, that's what it says.
Uh, Councilman Turner. George Turner.
Uh, we're looking at, the mayor did just that. He set the agenda at the input from public council and whomever else, and he set an agenda and sent it out. Here it is before us. Now, he wants to add an item. Um, council not necessarily wants to add an item at this time.
So let me correct you, Councilman. I don't care if that item makes it or not. I was giving you the courtesy of, 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 of moving it over from work session to the agenda. Simple fact of the matter is, the same way that, that Mr. Attorney has explained it three times, and he can do it ten times. One item, you get to add one item, and I haven't accepted the agenda for two items.
And, and we have an offer of one item tonight.
We don't have to move that item over from work session to, 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 uh, uh, city council meeting, which will be two items. But the two items that are on here, I'm gonna accept one item.
But those are not the items that I heard a council member offer. You set the agenda.
Uh, excuse me, Councilman, uh, to your words, these are the ones that you sent in, that you all opined and sent in. I'm going to pick one.
No.
One is B. We can, but everybody is blue in the face, but this is the charter. That's what the charter says. I'm following the charter, and the charter says that you all get one.
And the charter says.
That you wanted to add.
Public and council members should have input with the mayor making the agenda. And we had input, and the mayor made the agenda and sent it out.
And then the mayor makes the decision. The mayor makes the decision on the agenda and the one. I've heard input, and yes, I did get public input about, uh, item number A from the public that says, why are you covering this a third time? That we've already opined this, that it's already been approved, that it's already been said and opinioned by the city attorney and our internal auditor, that I'm not in jeopardy, that I'm not in conflict, that I have no problems with issuing and signing.
That's not true.
Contracts.
That's not accurate.
Having said that.
If you believe that, open it up and let us have a discussion on it.
You get, that, you get one item. Counsel, which?
Nope, I've got another question. I have another question for the attorney. I have another question for the attorney.
Excuse me, Councilwoman. Excuse me.
Well, you're, you're cutting everybody else off.
Excuse me?
I have a question for the attorney.
Thank you. The one item is contract with an external auditing firm to conduct the comprehensive audit of the government purchasing slash credit cards. That's your one item. That's your one item.
You're moving back.
I have a question for the attorney.
Has already been rendered by the charter, and that is, we had the input, and you chose our input, and you made an agenda.
Well, I only choose your agenda, Councilman, uh, when we, when I, when I accept the actual meeting, which is here, number five, approval of the council agenda. So we haven't approved the council agenda, so I haven't accepted both items. Councilwoman Cobble, you have a question?
I do. I have a question for the attorney. I'm gonna, I'm gonna separate these things to make sure that we are understanding what you are saying, Winston. We are on the item on the agenda, to approve the agenda. We, are we there together so far?
Yes.
We are at the point to approve the agenda. The mayor has said that he is removing item A from new business without a vote. That would change the agenda. Are you still with me?
Yes.
Okay. He would also like to add, no, I'm not, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna keep them separate. Without a vote, can he remove item A right now at this point in the agenda without a vote?
Yes.
And you're saying that he can do that because the charter gives him the power to create the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, and you're also saying that regardless of Robert Rules of Order or any practice that we have at any council meeting, the mayor can change the agenda as we go, or at this point, at his pleasure because the charter says the mayor creates the agenda. So every meeting, and let me give you a scenario. Every meeting that we've had up until today, we've made an adjustment to the agenda. And at every meeting, we voted on that adjustment. Are you saying now today that an adjustment can be made to the agenda by the mayor without? by the mayor without a vote? Which is obviously a hundred percent different than what we've been doing for three years.
Yeah, yeah, we, I'm saying that the mayor sets the agenda, and I'm not saying that the charter says the mayor sets the agenda, so if we have, if we have had a practice of the mayor and the council, uh, setting the agenda, then that's just the practice, and I would interpret that as being, um, the council having input, and that input coming in the form of a vote. And that's just been our practice. Um, however, if you're saying what is strictly, what the mayor is strictly obligated to do, I believe he sets the agenda. I don't believe, uh, that it would be a fair reading of the charter to say that, um, once he has uh, uh, set the agenda for the meeting, um, that, for instance, like five minutes to go, I wanna change something, I wanna add something, I wanna delete something. I, I think that he has the ability to set the agenda. I believe that it is on the agenda for approval of the agenda, and I believe that that's, at that point, the mayor can set the agenda. Um, and then at that point, we have an agenda and then we move forward. Um, so, yes, the mayor has the ability to set the agenda. And if we have voted in the past, it's not, that would be just the mayor receiving the input, uh, that section three point, uh, zero one uh, discusses, receiving the input from, uh, the council, from the city manager, um, as we've done in the past. But the mayor does in fact set that agenda. There's a place on the agenda, uh, for accepting the agenda. That's where the mayor sets the agenda. And once he's, he's set that agenda, then the agenda is for the meeting, it is set, and he would have made that decision based on receiving input. And if there were two council members that requested an item to be added, he would have added that item as he's obligated to do.
So we're at the point where we approve the agenda.
Yes.
The mayor has said, I'm removing item A. And then he will call for a vote.
Yes.
Okay, and if that vote.
I'm sorry, I, I was with you up to the point of a vote because, um, we, if you're asking me, does it require a vote? I, I don't see where in the charter it requires a vote of the city council, knowing for the mayor to set the agenda. Uh, it says just the opposite. It says the mayor sets the agenda for council meetings. Doesn't require a vote of the city council to set the agenda.
Okay, so let's say we do something completely different than we've ever done today. And we're at the point to approve the agenda, which is listed on the agenda, approve agenda. So let's say we don't use the action word, approve, and the mayor says, I'm taking off A. Now we're, now we're, we're done with approve agenda. We're moving on to the next item. Right, you're saying that that is okay, and only because, just because we've done it differently every day up to, up until this one, means nothing. If today the mayor decides we're at approve agenda, I'm removing A and we're moving on to the next item, you're saying that that is an appropriate way to continue this meeting?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it's, it's, and, and it's not really me saying it. It's, it's the charter saying it. I mean, I, I don't want this to be.
Well, obviously, cause the charter doesn't outline the, the Robert Rules of Order that we've followed, right, for conducting meetings. Right, so obviously approve agenda is an item on there because it's what we have done. So what, so I'm just asking you, today we're gonna do it differently. Today, the mayor is saying, I'm taking A off, no need for an approval. I get to set the agenda per the charter. I don't need your approval. I'm gonna take it off. I'm gonna add something. I'm gonna move this agenda up and down as I please, because I have the authority to do so, and we will move on.
Now, that, that's what the charter says. The, the charter gives the mayor the authority to set the agenda. Um, I don't give him that power. The, the charter gives the mayor the power, that, it's, it's, it's plain as day, three point zero.
And I think we, I think we understand that. I think the confusion is coming from the fluctuation of time. Right, so you, so he can set the agenda now, later, in the middle, as we're going, prior to, after. So you're saying because the charter doesn't, doesn't distinguish when the agenda is set, this agenda can move at any moment throughout the meeting?
That's, that's not what I'm saying. I said the, the mayor sets the agenda and it's, once he has set the agenda, the agenda is set, as I understand.
When is the agenda set?
Uh, whenever he decides, I, he, he isn't on the agenda now. We at that point in the meeting right now, it's on the agenda that he, he's going to set the agenda. I think in fairness, the, the agenda should be set, uh, at the beginning of the meeting. We're gonna, he's gonna set the agenda. I think that's what, what, what's happening right now, and based on the charter, it says the mayor does that, and we have voted in the past. I'm not saying that's a problem, because the charter does talk about input from the city manager, from the city council, and so on and so forth. So, yes, and that input may, might have taken the form of a vote in the past, but you would search in vain in the charter to find where it says that the chart, that the, that the, uh, agenda has to be voted on or approved by the city council. It simply does not say that. It says the opposite. It says the mayor sets the agenda. I think in fairness, the mayor has and, and should set the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. I believe that's what's happening right now. And that's, that's going strictly by the charter, and it doesn't require interpretation or, or, or spin or opinion. It just, it just, it just says what it says. It doesn't, it says the agenda.
I have a question for the attorney. So are you saying that we can come to this meeting without an agenda and then set it once we get here?
Yeah, uh, uh, is that best practice? Probably not, but the, the charter doesn't give a lot of that. It would be better if the charter had elaborate procedures for setting the, the agenda, and, and said a whole lot more than it does, but it just doesn't. And so I can't give an opinion based on what I wish the charter said. It, it has very few words about setting the agenda. It doesn't say a whole lot. And we're, we, we got what we got. The charter says what it says, and it doesn't, there's nothing. The charter had said that the agenda has to be published forty hours before the meeting, or a week before the meeting, and that's what we would be bound by, but, but it doesn't say that.
It does. So I'm saying twenty-four hours. That particularly for, I know for call meetings, it says particularly that you must post the agenda for the meeting.
Well, if it, if it says that, it's not in the section that I'm looking at, but if, if the charter says that an agenda has to be set within a certain timeframe, then we, we live and die by, by the charter. We live and die by, and that, that's all I'm saying. So in terms of setting that agenda, it's only what the charter says, and it says the mayor sets the agenda.
And setting the agenda, I will accept the items other than A. If you all don't want the other item from work session, that's fine by me. So, um, with that.
I just don't, I don't understand how you can remove an item.
Um, what I will take is, uh, from council, an approval of this agenda minus A. Uh, in new business, we'll still cover B, but it will be minus A. Uh, is there a second?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, can you repeat that?
Uh, I move that we accept the agenda, um, for tonight. Minus new business, item A. Because per the charter, council gets one, uh, the council gets one, one, one item to add, and that's the item that's gonna be added, which is item B. So, uh, so my motion, make it clean, my motion is to accept the agenda tonight minus item A in new business.
Second.
There is a second.
Is, is there a discussion yet?
That was discussion.
I just wanted to know, if, if it's not approved, then what happens? If this agenda is not approved tonight, then what happens, Mr. Mayor?
Then we have no meeting. And then the general public will see how ridiculous this is.
Now, I thought the attorney just said that the charter doesn't require us to have an approved agenda. Did you not just say that?
Yes.
Okay, so.
You know, I think we, you argued like a whole hour about us moving forward with the ability to vote, and now we're doing it. And I don't understand why we're still going around spinning wheels on this issue. I just think as a point of order, we should just move forward. You have opportunity now, we all do, to vote. I mean, you know, just vote it up.
Okay, let's vote.
District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Nay.
District four.
Aye.
District five.
Nay.
Mayor, I, three, three, the meeting fails. Mr. Bale? This is done here.
I thought a tie was a tie.
Tie is a fail. Three, three, tie is a fail.
A tie is a tie.
Mr. Bale?
Yes, sir.
You can end the meeting now. They, they, uh, we can't do, we, we, we can't seem to be able to get the agenda, uh, uh, approved.
Yes, sir.
We can move on without an agenda.
Apparently we can.